You ready?
Yes.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America, into our republic which stands on nation under God, indivisible, with every right and justice for all.
Okay, first up is the appointment of a youth officer in the. Right. You good? You're good, Charles?
Yeah.
All right, so the motion is resolved to appoint Anthony DiNardo to the position of youth officer, annual salary of one hundred fifty-three thousand eight hundred and fifty-six dollars, effective November seventeen, twenty twenty-five. Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Congratulations and thank you. All right, next up is a promotion and I think we adopt the resolution first and then do the swearing in? No one's gonna correct me, then that's the way I'm gonna do it.
I guess you just swear.
Okay, so the resolution is resolved to appoint Patrick Garvey to the permanent position of police sergeant at an annual salary of one hundred fifty-nine thousand four hundred dollars, effective November seventeen, twenty twenty-five, subject to probationary period of not less than twelve weeks and not more than fifty-two weeks. Still have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, if you'd like to come forward. All right, so repeat after you raise your right hand or repeat after me. I, Patrick Garvey.
I, Patrick Garvey.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of New York.
And the Constitution of the State of New York.
And that I will faithfully discharge the duties.
And that I will faithfully discharge the duties.
Of the office of police sergeant.
Of the office of police sergeant.
According to the best of my ability.
According to the best of my ability.
Congratulations. Good?
Yeah, you can read it.
Of course. Want a chair? I'll give you one in and one out. Congratulations. That's good, you won?
So you can get it tomorrow.
Good to see the rest of the board come December one.
Yes.
And nobody else. Wait a minute, what about you?
We're our marital board members, so.
Also, you're a regular.
Thank you for being the only community member.
All right, announcements. Actually, I'm gonna start with one that's not on there, and that is to express condolences to the family of Greg Nielsen. Greg had a long history of service to the DPW and to the community and to the country as a veteran. And I was fortunate to be able to work with him particularly in my first term as mayor and as trustee before that. He was a good man and he will be missed. He passed away, I wanna say, two, three days. Thank you more, a little bit more. Monday, thank you, Monday. So our condolences to the family. All right, now the rest of the announcements. The Peter K. Ole Turkey Trot will be on Sunday, November twenty-third at two P M. at Downs Lane. And checks over twenty-five thousand include Rico Recognition Systems, Inc., for license plate reading licenses and maintenance. It's from the Capital Fund for thirty-two thousand three hundred and forty dollars. And Brad Hurst Site Construction Corp. for the Harriman Road Culvert Project, payment number five from Capital Fund four hundred and fifty thousand four hundred and thirty-one dollars. Those guys contracting for the Artsley Avenue Drainage Project curb installation from Capital Fund twenty-five thousand four hundred and twenty dollars and nine cents. And I guess there is no correspondence, so public comment, anybody feel the urge, you're welcome to know, okay? You'll get another shot. The Consent Agenda, which is the minutes of the board from the regular meeting on November third, deployment of a volunteer firefighter, approval of a stipend for Ryan Frame. So I'm gonna make a motion to adopt the Consent Agenda. If anybody has any questions, you can ask. If not, I'll take a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Charles, I have one recommendation, if you can get Karen to go back, it's not for me, it's for you, go back to putting bookmarks in. Because I don't think this has, I finally learned how to use them so that we wouldn't have to like scroll pages. Exactly right, I'm scrolling through finding them for me. Okay, let's see. Authorization to approve change order number three for the Madison Park Stage Project. Do you wanna tell us a little bit about what that is or, although maybe there's a description in this. Bringing in forty to fifty, forty to forty-five yards of topsoil to fill slumped area on the side of the driveway next to the stage. And building a concrete pad around the electrical pipes near the bathrooms. Is that?
That's it, Mayor.
Okay, then if there's no questions, my motion is resolved to approve change order number three with J C Land Site Development Inc. in the amount of ten thousand four hundred and thirty-two dollars for the Madison Park Stage Project and authorize the village administrator to execute that change order. Do I have a second? All in favor?
Aye.
Approval of contract with H V E A Engineers for the Riverview Road Culvert. Can you tell us about that one?
Sure, so this, um, this project is designed to mitigate flooding when the river was broken. This was funded partially by a New York, Ridge New York grant in the amount of around nine hundred and eight, nine hundred thousand, nine hundred seventy-five thousand dollars. So this, this project is, this is the same contractor that's working on the Downingwood Culvert. Meant to help mitigate some flooding that's gonna be happening.
Okay, any other questions? Anybody? No? Then my motion is resolved to approve a contract with H V E A Engineers in an amount not to exceed two hundred and fifty-eight thousand forty-seven dollars plus reversible costs, not to exceed twenty-five thousand eight hundred for design services for the Riverview Road Brook Culvert Project, and to authorize the village administrator to execute the contract. And be it further resolved that the expenses associated with this project shall be charged to general ledger account. Oh, oh, six, five, oh, one, oh, oh, four, six, nine, oh, five, oh, oh. Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
John, can I just?
Of course, go ahead.
Before you sign it, I remember I sent you an email that said that they, where the party's identified and it says the municipality, just change that to sponsor, even if you pen it in, because throughout the contract, they never use the term municipality, they use the term sponsor. So just, just you just cross our municipality.
Right. Thanks.
The changes aren't substantive, but they didn't get a chance to make the changes before it came before the board. Understood.
Yeah, yeah, just do it before you sign it.
Yeah, no problem.
Okay, I'm working my way to the next item.
That's long.
Yeah. Lot of exhibits.
Yes, like seven or eight.
Sixty-four. No problem. Okay, authorization to approve change order number four for the Harriman Road U S Route Nine Culvert Project. And let's see. The description. Additional rock removal and excavation, estimated rock removal and excavation through Victor Drive for two culverts and outlook, all structure under Route Nine. That pretty much what we got here, okay?
It's correct, it's consistent with many of the other change orders that have happened.
A lot of rocks. Got it. Who knew that there were rocks on there?
That's why I always have money in my renovation. There's rock there?
Okay, my motion is resolved to approve change order number four with Brad Hurst Site Construction Corp. in the amount of two hundred and seventy-four thousand dollars, two hundred and seventy-four thousand eight hundred and ninety dollars for the Harriman Road U S Route Nine Culvert Project, and to authorize the village administrator to execute that change order. Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All right, yes, oh, found it already, okay. Okay, we have resignation, oh, I should let you read this resignation.
And I have a hand in the third one, so it's especially fitting for my last.
There you go.
You want me to explain the third one?
Sure.
Yeah. So just so everyone knows, Shauna is the co-chair of the theater commission. As you know, Greg resigned as the theater manager back in August. In order to fill the gap until we can bring someone in, she is gonna step up and take the temporary theater manager job. She can't do that and be on the commission at the same time. So she's taking a leave from the commission and then she'll temporarily be on.
So you've actually explained item twelve and thirteen, temporary appointments.
Yes, yes.
Good.
Yes.
Okay.
I don't know about the first two.
No problem. Yes, they submitted those voluntarily. So my motion is resolved to accept with regret the resignation of Mia Ferrada as a member of the Facilities Planning Committee effective November ten, twenty twenty-five, and resolved to accept with regret the resignation of Mike Aziz as a member of the Transit Oriented Developments zoning advisory committee. And I assume that's just effective today, correct? Okay, and be it further resolved to accept the temporary resignation of Shauna Liebman as co-chair of the theater commission effective November eight, twenty twenty-five. Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
We should just say that Mike Aziz is only resigning from the T O D because of the extent of his involvement in the facilities planning.
Absolutely, yeah, I mean, he.
Because it's a big.
Yeah, and, and to be fair to him, I trusted his arm to get him onto T O D because he was on the facilities planning committee thinking that they could work together, but I think there's still some overlap there, and I know that Mike is generous with his time, so if they have questions, he'll answer questions. Okay. Temporary appointment of part-time personnel for the Irvington Town Hall Theater, which has been explained by Mitch already. So I will make the following motion, resolve to make the following temporary appointment in the Irvington Town Hall Theater effective October eight, twenty twenty-five, January sixth, twenty twenty-six, Shauna Liebman, part-time theater staff, forty dollars per hour. Before I ask for a second, the, that, that date is making, the end date is making an assumption that you'll find somebody by then or?
So that, that's a temporary appointment, so the law is that that can only go.
We fill this for ninety days.
Got it.
Okay.
And I believe that should be November eighth, so I need to fix that on the resolution.
The first, the first date?
Yes, the first.
October, okay, so.
It should be November.
Okay.
So I'll make that change.
Which means, so then you can go to February?
Yes.
Got it, okay. So assume that October is November and January is February, that's that. Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All right, let's see. Authorization to approve mutual termination letter with Sustainable Westchester Inc. Constellation New Energy. We, I actually got this notice in the mail, but Charles, can you give us the short version of what's happening here? I think everybody up here probably already knows, but the rest of the world, if they're watching.
So essentially, the Sustainable Westchester program, Westchester Power is no longer financially viable, so the firm that's been providing it, Constellation Energy, is terminating the agreement, and anyone who partnered with West Sustainable Westchester through this program has to terminate the agreement. So people who did this for their houses are getting this letter and they're officially terminating the same with the village.
Now, the village, we as a board chose to partner with them. Does this mean we have no village-provided defaults? Is that something that we should look into?
Defaults to the, to the standard provider.
So it's Con Ed and then?
Right.
Con Ed probably gives you an option if you want an alternate provider, like you want, what is it, hydro or?
Right, but here's my, my, my point is that the village made a choice that we wanted to stand up for sustainable energy, so that's why we made this partnership. There are other companies that provide sustainable energy. They're not, this company that's going out of business is not the only one that does it. In fact, I already have been contacted by a company, because I had this also, and I had a company I'd been with once before that does it. So I'm just saying that, that, I mean, I'm not gonna be here, you're not gonna be here, but for Orlean and Josie, you guys might wanna look into if there's another partner that could just be done with, because, you know, in other words, if you also think that we should make a statement about sustainability and, you know, I think that would be a good thing to do.
Okay, so the resolution is, my resolution, resolved, be it resolved that the board of trustees of the village are hereby authorized the village administrator to execute the mutual termination letter with Sustainable Westchester Inc. and Constellation New Energy, thereby terminating the village of Irvington's participation in the Westchester Power program, and be it further resolved that the village administrator is authorized to take any and all necessary actions to effectuate the intent of this resolution. Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
The letter behind, okay. Reports of board standing committees and officers, I'm gonna, I wanna say a couple things first. Mostly thank yous, I'm gonna start with you. I wanna thank you for the four years you've given to the village. Since I know personally what sticks out of you, since you're one year and, and, and we're ending with a bang, since I know you had a long day as well as everybody else on this board. As long as you're here. Yeah, yeah, some of us started at nine A M. and will end whenever this ends, but you've been a great addition. I've had the opportunity to be not just with these trustees, but with others when I was a trustee on the board and as a mayor before. And you've been very thoughtful and a good partner for everybody, so, thank you.
Thank you very much.
Well, it's hard for me to say as a drummer that he's a great drummer, but I, but I can acknowledge that you're good.
I'm not embarrassed to say it's true.
John is like a fairly proficient drummer.
Thank you, thank you as the likely next mayor. That's an inside joke, though, okay. And the second sort of, oh, I also wanna thank everybody else who I've served with on the board and the village staff and Larry Schaff or whoever you are.
I'm not even listening to this meeting.
Yeah, you never know.
Only after, because he doesn't want us to know. So here we go on now.
But the truth is, none of us can get, can get anything done that we wanna get done without the assistance of the village staff. And I think that's, you know, what they have done is pretty remarkable. Nobody's perfect, we're not perfect, and neither are all the members of the staff, but their efforts are very much appreciated. And last and certainly not least, the only way that we, we as board members and all of the volunteers out there who are on the various committees and to a large extent the village staff can function is because our families let us do it. So I want to express my thanks and I'm glad you're here, and in fact, I actually have something for you. The mayor has, the mayor has limited prerogatives, but I can issue a proclamation. I'm gonna read a few paragraphs, so since I, since I ran the meeting quickly, yeah, your husband's gonna be pissed at you probably, but. But, but it really is true that we, we consciously choose to become members of the board and other volunteers consciously choose to volunteer for various aspects of things. Our families don't always get a, a choice, and they have to make up for the time that we're not there, and it's not an easy. It's not easy for them, for spouses, for children, for whomever is a member of your family, and so consider this representative of the, my sentiment towards all of those family members who stand behind us and let us do what we do. So I will give you just a taste for it, because it gets a little sappy in a few spots, but Jonathan Segal, whereas Jonathan Segal could not have served the village of Irvington as mayor, trustee, and A R B. member without the assistance of Judy Segal, whereas Judy Segal served on village committees, attended village board meetings, committee meetings and events, and hosted village-related meetings, and whereas Judy provided unwavering support for her husband and the village while attending to her professional responsibilities as chief of urology of Jacobi Medical Center and with her husband built a close-knit family, and whereas Jonathan Segal desires to honor and expresses love and appreciation for Judy Segal, Jonathan Segal serving as mayor of the village of Irvington do hereby proclaim our thirty-fifth wedding anniversary, which is November twenty-fourth, as Judy F. Segal Day in the village. And I didn't use A I. to draft this. Now, I, I, I should add.
Can I get a picture of the two?
Sure.
Yeah. That's amazing. Took thirty-five years to. So John, you still have to do something, though, to celebrate your.
Whoa, don't, don't steal my fire, I'm not done. Proclamation hours.
I said my first order of business will be a proclamation.
So I, I should add two things as mayor, one, not everyone who gets a proclamation gets kissed, that's inappropriate. And two, yes, I'm well aware this is not an anniversary present. Anyway, thank you. Now we can actually have the real reports.
I mean, how can we follow that?
I can't follow. I have a list, but I'm like. Matter, I can't make a proclamation. I would like to say that I, if my wife is watching, I am not able or.
Yes, I will vouch for that fact, no one else but the mayor can issue a proclamation.
Thank you, sir.
Everyone's gonna get a proclamation.
That's hilarious. Well, I actually wanted to start also with thank you, I mean, I, I really, it's been, it's been a pleasure. Which I really appreciate, like, I'm just a whole school teacher kid, and it's like, what do I know, and you guys were really welcoming, just like, driving the ropes, talking me through it, you like spent so much extra time like, like meeting with us and just like, sort of like, explaining issues of the village, and it's just, it was really, it's smooth, I think I really appreciate it. Get all the difference, but thank you so much for being, doing all that, and all the things you're coming up for as mayor.
Thanks, I appreciate it.
For that, school boards. School boards have their next meeting on November eighteenth, seven thirty in high school. They're gonna be talking about in middle schools, we're talking about world language, I'm not, my school, we're talking about portion of the ground. There's gonna be an early dismissal, it'll be twenty-six, or Wednesday, the twenty-sixth, before Thanksgiving, so each of the schools will be in early.
Time, we cannot be on Main Street.
I can see, yes, I actually do have the time to view. Downs Lane, we eleven fifteen, Main Street, twelve fifteen, twelve ten.
You're trying to park.
Go to Jordane's early. Irvington Middle School, twelve twenty, and the high school, eleven forty. And then the scapple committee will be meeting on November eighteen, twenty-eight. I guess I just to reiterate a welcome, Irvington, the new members committee, my last week, and Charles, I actually wanted to follow up with you, we had such a long meeting on Wednesday, so like eleven, I have the heart to even bring up the website at that point. But I would like to get some points out to you about like how we can coordinate with the new website and the committee.
Sure, no problem, I'll make sure we put some time on my calendar.
Perfect, thank you. And I also, for the next work session, we have a meeting, I think I mentioned earlier, an earlier meeting, I had a meeting with Mercy University, December twelfth, to discuss the possible, um, arrangement for next summer, but I did wanna talk through like what I propose to them, because I'd like to have our consensus. I'd like to build off what we have a contract we had from us here, but it shouldn't be the same, I think we should like think about how we, what it gets to make it better, and like, if we're doing sessions, it really shouldn't be, be the same way. So I have a few proposals, but I'd love some feedback, certainly for the balance. Again, last, we can say this, not the time course.
So on behalf of one of the other members of, that are not attorneys on the board, I wanna thank the two of you for stepping down so we can get a lot more.
I know, it's pretty anxious, isn't it?
It's awful.
No, I know, but in, in all seriousness, thank you both for orienting me and for always, you know, explaining the issues, and it's going to be strange to be serving without the two of you.
Way to get a better distribution, especially with these folks.
But I recognize, you know, the sacrifices that both of you have made to be in the soul and thank you.
Thank you. Sorry, she's not, not, sorry.
All right, so let's talk about Green, the Green, Irvington Green Team, they had successful smashing pumpkins event for compost, farmers market, past couple of Sundays. Just a reminder that your pumpkins are compostable. And then that food scrap study went out, so lots of material, maybe we can incorporate that into a future work session, just to talk about next steps and findings from that report, especially since we were looking at the D P W. facilities today and kind of assessing where we are. The next climate talk is about, it actually feels very timely after yesterday's events, it's about trees in Irvington. So it's by Warwick Norton and thinking about how the village, you know, handles trees, so we have peace, very involved with the tree commission. And as always, that's the first Wednesday. Um, and as always, that's the first Wednesday of the month, so December, Thursday, seven PM at the library. And let's see, for the, the highway department in DPW, um, they had an IP call out for a fallen tree and no power at Janet Terrace. They associate, assisted the water department with hydro excavation. They prepped all their vehicles for winter. Um, yep, there was also another call out for a fallen tree and down wires at South Broadway. Um, actually that was last night.
Yeah.
Yeah. So wanted to say thank you for, I know that our DPW was involved in our, our police department, um, for making sure that everyone stayed safe. And they got that cleared by this morning so it didn't impact work schedules. Um, and then stormwater management maintenance took place on Meadow Brook, Fargo, West Sunnyside, Hudson View Park and East Sunnyside Lane. And, oh, uh, last week, Charles and I, um, had the second, uh, transit oriented development meeting. We had all of our members in attendance and, um, they chose a committee chair and are working on, so, and decided to meet monthly, um, and they're working on the December meeting date. I'll actually be stepping off, um, as TOD liaison because one of our incoming board members has a lot more experience with the issue. Um, but they did have a lot of questions about, you know, how much of a zone that we were thinking about and how big we want the zone to be. Um, and how that might interact with the Cosmopolitan building and its plans. So the committee's really beginning to form and take shape and have those discussions and.
Sorry, by that you mean they're, they're considering the, the extent of the zone themselves.
Yes.
Okay.
Well, they wanted guidance from the board about how large of an area the zone should encompass.
That's gonna be up to, obviously up to you folks, but when we set it up, it, it was almost the reverse. We were saying to the committee.
Yeah.
Tell us what you think. Take a good look at it.
Yeah.
Because we're, it's not like we have, other than our experience in the village, we don't have a special expertise in deciding. Okay, here's where you draw the line.
Right, right. So there was a lot of discussion about how big that zone should be and how it interacts with the historic district. Um, and if the goal was for, you know, to draw, like to keep local business here or draw people from the outside. So all the right questions being asked. Um, and I think the concern of the committee is they wanted to just make sure that they were in line with the wishes of the board because they didn't want to go through a process and then have the board say, this is not what we were looking for. That makes, I mean, that makes sense, right? If, I think if they come and say, yeah, I mean, I, I agree with you, John, right? Like, I think we were looking to that committee to say, this is what makes sense. I could see them coming back initially during the initial stages to say, here's what we think. Do you agree? So I think that's.
And here's what we think based on X, Y and Z.
Correct.
Yes.
Correct.
And that, and I think that makes sense because they should come back to us, right?
So it's gonna be similar to the facilities planning committee. Where we, uh, this board, this group is gonna be designed to, um, develop an RFP to go out for consulting services. They will be shepherding that process along and then there'll be regular reports to the board to outline, you know, what is big cell look like, what is small cell look like and make sure that it's aligned. So part of this process is going to be education of not only the people on the committee, but the board as well. And the board will be able to direct, uh, further development to that.
What I forgot to mention is that we also had a guest speaker, um, Jan Johansson?
Johannesson from KCSJ Consulting.
Um, who's done work in Mount Kisco and also in Artsley. And so was there to provide some context and some information around TOD zones. Okay, that's what I have.
First thing I want to say is, my last meeting is, you should figure out which of the systems is adding this dystopian participant. Because it's right out of a sci-fi movie and it's very disturbing.
It is a little distracting.
I don't want to be participant twenty-four.
Were you another number before?
No, you were worse. At least let me have my numbers.
Oh, it's tracking you.
No, it is. I've been twenty-four multiple times. Yeah. So that's my.
Well, this is gonna be your last time as participant twenty-four.
Participant twenty-four? You have been terminated.
Yes, exactly. Um, yes. Um, anyway, thank you everyone for the kind words. I appreciate it. Um, I'd like to also express my thanks to everyone I've served with you guys for the last year. Thank you so much. Um, and John, really thank you so much as mayor. I think you've always shown me like a, a lot of respect and, and, and I always appreciated that. And, um, and Arlene, we've been through this, we were elected together and, and we went through these four years and now you're gonna be mayor and I'm leaving. No, but I, I leave knowing and feeling very confident that the village is beating us and I know you're gonna do a great job. So thank you so much for that. And thank you, Charles. I know we only overlapped for a couple of months, but it's been a pleasure working with you and I know you're gonna do a great job also.
Thank you. Don't be a stranger.
Yes.
And Katie for you as well. And if we're gonna talk about staff people, you know, for the time I was here for most of it, Greg was the theater manager and I had very good relationships with him. And Rosemary at the library also. So there's a lot of staff that's really, um, been, um, really helpful to me in doing the job that I have to do. So thank you to them. And I agree. Thank you to our families. Let us, I always, you know, when I was approached to run by David Ibermora, I remember telling my wife and son, and I'm like, I just want to make sure you guys are behind this. And my wife is like, definitely. And my son's like, no, don't do this. So it took some convincing to get him on board as well. But, um, so yes, thank you for letting me go for all these meetings. And that's honestly the main reason why. I've been making a lot of jokes about being happy to, to be done, but that's really the main reason is to spend, you know, some more time with them. I think they need me and that's a lot going on and, uh, um, so thank you, everybody. Um, okay, uh, for my reports, you mentioned Warwick. He's the chair of the tree commission. They meet twice a month. Uh, and it's talking about like, since everyone is talking about like, you know, no one knows how the board works and things like that. You know, they are, they are a, a committee that works very, very hard. They go out to people's homes. They do inspections. They have great expertise. They put a lot of time into their jobs and they meet twice a month. Um, so, uh, just they're doing great work and the time, the time I hope I can really help connect them with the village on things, but they, they don't really need any help. They do a great job. Um, the theater, I feel like we've already given a theater report of all that's going on, but I do want to note, theater's still open. There's still events happening. There are great events going on there. You know, the comedy show from Sold Out about, about two weeks ago, I think we can have to go whatever it was. With a former sign, I remember and, and, and the guy who warms up for Jimmy Fallon and it's a, it was a great event. There's some great holiday events. So make sure you check that out. Um, as for the library, you know, honestly, I wanted to be the library liaison from the beginning because I always thought libraries are so important to communities. And I go to these meetings every month and I just so continually, and I think I bring it back here, you guys hear. I don't think people understand what a role this institution plays in, in our village. And when you look at it in a data form, it really strikes at home. There were four hundred, there were twenty-seven children's programs in October that drew a total of four hundred and thirty-three visits. I mean, I, I, it just, it blows me away. Um, the, the meeting room was used fourteen nights of the, of the thirty nights and thirty-one nights. It was October, thirty-one nights. Um, and, and if it's an, an individual organization, if I'm not mistaken, it's free, right? They don't get charged for that for the organization. Is that right, Katie Dino?
Yeah, that's right.
It's free, yeah. So it's just something that they everybody for the, and all, you know, people want to talk about like circulation and books and everything. Well, they're, they were above last, last October and, and above September on, on circulation. The increase in people doing electronic things is going up and up. There were nineteen hundred and thirty-nine ebook rentals in October, which was three hundred more than September and year to year was growing more. Um, and here's something that people don't think about. The library has become the place where people most get their internet service or their computer use outside of their homes. Um, that they, that from October to, uh, twenty-five to October, twenty-four, I'm sorry to bore people. I just think this is so important. Um, there's been a twenty percent increase in computer use in the library. By that we mean both people using their PCs there, which is a more modest, modest growth, but people still, who for whatever reason don't have devices. We don't think about that in Irvington, right? There are people who don't always have devices to get on the internet. The library is a place that they can go do that and helps to kind of equal out that digital divide a little bit. And then, um, same thing goes for, for Wi-Fi, although I don't, that's not always a digital device, but still, um, that was a huge increase from October to October last year. It's something that's been steadily going on. And it's just, it, the library plays so many roles between the books and, and, and music, CDs and movies and, and ebooks and audiobooks and, um, periodical subscriptions, like Consumer Reports, did you know you can go there if you need to look up for a product or whatever we have? They have subscriptions to that. It is just between what people take out, what people use the space for, for those events and for those meetings. And people just using it as a place to be where they can access the internet. It's just in many ways you can make an argument that the library is the center of our village. So as I step off the board, I just want to put it on the record for everyone going forward that we really need to take care of and, um, and, and recognize what, what the library brings to the, thank you.
So I, I want to say thank you to Mitch, who was like my day one. We went through a lot together, right? Campaigning and then being on this board. And I think, um, I just respect your thinking so much. I respect sort of like your thoughtfulness about the issues and like all of the discussions, the discussions that we had. Again, you and I know we don't always agree, but like I think the respect has been super, it's always in there. And I think it's one of the things that, you know, people forget that we're all volunteers. And I think, John, what you said about our families is so true. Like I think, um, we do this because, you know, the village matters to us. We are so lucky to live in a village. So many people, I keep saying this, but it's true that like care so much, dedicate time. Um, and I think we just have to continue. Like I think this board has set a very good example with each other of like mutual respect. And that is a thing that I think is important. And I remember we first started and I said, you know, you said like set a tone about this. And I think, you know, I think you did. And I think it's been a really pleasant experience. You know, again, not, it's, it's not about always agreeing. It's, you know, it's about like civil discourse, talking things through and like understanding that at the end of the day, we all have that, the same goal, right? And we all like love this village. We want to see it prosper. We want to support all these things. I love that you gave this library report. I think you've been such a champion of the library. Even and, and, you know, when we had difficulties, right, with other people sort of being like, well, maybe we cut the library budget. And like thinking about having these different perspectives on the board and the people that love different parts of the village. But making sure that we come together, support the things we, we know are sort of the, the building blocks of what we have here and continuing to do that. I feel very lucky. This is not an easy process. We all get a lot back and forth. I hope people know to be respectful the way we are respectful of each other, and I hope we get that back. But, um, you guys, you know, you're gonna be super missed for me because you've been here for four years. John, I think you've been, you know, really good at this and I think you've been an important addition to this board. So this is not, you know, an easy transition, transition. Um, I said to Brian Smith, I have big shoes to fill, you know? I plan to work as hard and like be as inclusive, I think, um, and just respectful of our community. And I think, you know, I, I hope, you know, we're not letting you go. We're gonna be looking for you. Um, but thank you so much. And I, and I hope, you know, you have brighter future days ahead and then give you a little space and hopefully you go back in some capacity.
Reminder, son, that, uh, you, you came home for a while.
Yes, yeah. But anyways, so thank you both and you'll be super missed. Um, but you will be far and we will come for you. So it's fine. I feel confident we'll be good. Um, so, um, I, I'm not gonna give a report. We have upcoming meetings. Our podcast meeting this week and so we'll fulfill. But I do want to say just a little bit about what we did today because I don't think you've said enough about that. Um, but we spent, um, Kent, Josie, John and I and Charles spent the entire day with a BB and B team, BBB team. Um, David Swibel was also there. And I just want to be super clear for the, um, public that the reason we noticed the meeting was because there were more than two of us present. But that the idea of the meeting was really to help the consultants, um, just their, their beginning view of all the facilities and to meet some of the people, but that was not the in-depth conversations that are gonna be forthcoming. Um, Charles, right, we talked today about, we're gonna provide summary, a summary of what happened today. But to kind of continue to keep the public informed and, and that there will be many points for residents to, um, give us feedback. And certainly in-depth processes for the department heads and the fire department to get, to really give their feedback. So that's the beginning of the process. We're gonna continue that process and I think, um, today was a good day, although it was a long day.
Yes, and cold.
And very cold.
Charles, anything?
Um, the only thing I would add is that the village hall will be closed on the twenty-seventh and twenty-eighth and observance of Thanksgiving.
I forgot one thing. Can I just say? I left out Mary Ann. You give so much, oh my God, I could not, especially early on, but even through all four years, you provide so much guidance beyond just this is what the statute goes says. You've been unbelievably helpful to me in understanding and I, I, I've gotten entitled. That when it just came up, I'd be like, well, Mary Ann will just explain that to me. Like, and that is not something I should ever have taken for granted. And I, I didn't want to start thanking people and then I, I said, if I forget, I'm gonna forget someone. And then I remembered, I forgot you. And you were a fantastic help and thank you so much for all you did for that.
I completely agree. And, and you enable us to sort of bridge gaps between various boards since you're advising real estate boards as well.
I've said that to you a long time.
Yeah, that, yeah, that's, that's maybe true also.
I proceeded to your first term.
Yeah, that, that, that's probably true.
Mary Ann, the term is institutional knowledge. It sounds much better than I think.
Um, Katie.
All right. So our, um, our twenty twenty-five audit financial statements have been issued and are posted on the village website under financial documents in the clerk treasurer section. Uh, we've once again been issued an unmodified opinion, which is also known as a clean opinion. And that's the most favorable type of audit opinion we can receive. Um, I'm still working out the dates with the accounting firm, O'Connor Davies, to come and present to the, at the board meeting. But it's either gonna be December fifteenth or January fifth. She's gonna get back to me. The justice court audit report has also been finalized and there'll be a resolution for that report's acceptance on the agenda at next meeting. And lastly.
Sorry, and then that gets mailed or wherever.
To the, um, the New York State courts. Um, yeah, they have the email address on that letter.
The mayor and as a successor, it falls on you is, gets a letter from them saying, hey, where's your financials for your court?
And then, um, our two million, three hundred fifty-one thousand, uh, fan sale is scheduled for this Thursday, November twentieth, and we're looking forward to good sale results on that.
I don't have anything to put other than to say it was a pleasure serving with you, Jack, for four years and you Mitched you. And, uh, I wish you a pleasant and relaxing retirement.
Thank you. Thank you. If there is such a thing, yes. Uh, I appreciate that. Um, like, anybody have anything else? Then, uh, oops, forgive me, pub, public comment. Yes, anybody? All right. Um, then I will make a motion to adjourn and thank everybody.
Oh.
Second. All in favor. All right. Sorry.
We're like, what?
Also don't.